I'm in charge of all the painful decisions.
I'd like to call to order the June 25, 2018, meeting of City Council Successory Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority for the City of San Carlos. And the Pledge of Allegiance is going to be led by Boy Scouts Troop 321. So could you please rise? Gentlemen, it's all yours.
Could you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, any changes to the order of agenda tonight, gentlemen?
I have one change I'd like to propose. We had a request from staff if the council would consider moving Item 10A, the appointment of the YAC, ahead of Item 9A, which is our unfinished business item on the cannabis tax.
Sure, that was a suggestion that someone else made, I remember. Sounds like a good idea. Anything else? All right, Mr. Rubens, any report from closed session?
There's no report from closed session, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we have some presentations tonight, four of them, so we'll get started on that. First one is a presentation or proclamation to Natalie Thaw, third place winner of Rethink Waste 2018 Trash to Art Contest. So Natalie, are you here? Natalie? Okay, you want to come on up? How are you tonight? First of all, I want to congratulate you personally for winning our third place in the contest, thank you. And I want to read a couple of things here. Whereas this contest is held on Earth Day, usually April 22nd, and also it's involved 195 other countries besides the United States celebrate this. Rethink Waste had its sixth annual trash to art contest inviting all 3rd through 5th grade classes and individual students in the service area to give trash a new meaning by creating artwork of any medium from material collected at home, school, and everyday life. Nine classes and 23 individuals submitted their one-of-a-kind pieces. And Rethink Waste was the judging area and they knocked it down to the different artistic quality, creativity, originality, and a clear message that it was giving. And whereas Natalie Thaw, a 3rd grader from White Oaks Elementary, received 3rd place for her Treehouse of Wonders art piece made of cardboard, paper, popsicle sticks, paper tubes, wine corks, straws, and bottle caps. So now there will be proclaimed that I Bob Grisilli, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, hereby congratulate Natalie Thaw upon winning 3rd place in the 2018 Trash to Art Contest individual category and encourages the community to continue being creative and taking care of our environment dated this day, 25th day of June 2018. Congratulations. I know you wanted to say something, so go ahead.
Hi, my name is Natalie Thaw. I just finished 3rd grade at White Oaks Elementary and I'm going into 4th grade at Arroyo next year. I made a treehouse for the Trash to Art Contest and I titled it "The Treehouse of Wonders." The Treehouse of Wonders means to me a place for kids to think up of ideas and to reflect. And I entered the Trash to Art Contest because I like art and I love to create things. And lastly, I want to inspire other kids into reusing trash instead of letting the trash fill up the landfills.
Thank you Natalie very much, very eloquent, very eloquent, thank you. Are your parents here? Your parents, are your parents here? Hi Mom, how are you? Congratulations. All right, thank you Natalie very much, thank you. Instead of walking back and forth. Next is a proclamation designated July 2018 as Parks and Recreation Month. So Amy, is that you? Our Park and Recreation Director Amy Newby will be accepting this. I'll read a few of the whereas's. Whereas parks provide access to the serenity and inspiration of nature and outdoor spaces to play and exercise as well as to preserve and protect the historic, natural, and cultural resources on community. And whereas recreation fosters human development, providing positive alternatives for children and youth during non-school hours to reduce crime and mischief. Mischief, boy, that's a word I haven't heard in a while. Thereby helping children and youth develop and grow into healthy and productive adults. Open spaces, Parks and Rec strengthens community image sense of place, encourages healthy movement. We have thousands of children, adults, and seniors involved in San Carlos in all different items that we have. We have situations like the Youth Center, the Senior Lunch Program, events such as the Goblin Walk, the Night of Holiday Lights, and the Family Campout. Is the campout in August, is August going to be? And it's just, we're very fortunate to have a terrific Park and Recreation Department and also to offer many, many programs to everybody from the little ones all the way to the seniors. So be it proclaimed that July 2018 will be Park and Recreation Month dated this 25th day of June 2018. Congratulations. Did you want to say anything?
Thank you Mayor Grisilli. Amy Newby, Parks and Recreation Director. I want to thank you for declaring July as Parks Make Life Better Month and Parks Recreation Month. I encourage all of our residents to get out, visit one of our parks this summer, attend one of our summer concerts, movie nights in the park. As Mr. Grisilli, Mayor Grisilli mentioned, we have our second annual Family Campout on August 17th and 18th in Burton Park, a chance for your family to camp out in our park. And camps kicked off last week, so for all the children in town, we have tons of camp offerings. So come join us this summer. And then lastly, we did kick off a community photo challenge. So this summer, we are encouraging the community to take pictures, capture summer in San Carlos, hashtag Summer of Good Living. And at the end of the summer, we are going to name a winner of our photo contest. So I challenge you all, thank you.
Thanks Amy, thank you. So the city clerk has informed me that I skipped 5B because I was looking for a green thing, and there was no green thing. But we're going to have Chief Dury, I believe, present this. A presentation of a Crime Prevention Award to Dr. Harry Wong. So Chief, are you going to come up and do this for me? And Sheriff Carlos Bolanas is also here. Thank you. I'll let you take over the microphone.
Does it want work? Mayor, City Council. Today we're here to honor a longtime San Carlos resident, Dr. Harry Wong, for his dedication in helping ensure that the City of San Carlos remains safe, a safe place for people to visit, work, and live. Over the last several years, Dr. Wong has dedicated hundreds of volunteer hours while assisting our community service officer Deputy Wally Rosales with the development, promotion, and growth of the City of San Carlos's Neighborhood Watch Program. With the support of Dr. Wong, Deputy Rosales was able to form additional Neighborhood Watch groups within the City of San Carlos and make the number of active groups went from seven to 45. We encourage the creation and participation of the Neighborhood Watch Program, which serve as an extra set of eyes and ears that can report suspicious activities to law enforcement immediately. Working together with the community members is key in reducing crime and building a partnership with a strong foundation in communication and trust is instrumental when developing a successful Neighborhood Watch Program. Dr. Wong has truly embodied this, and there have been many occasions where he's even hosted the Neighborhood Watch Programs at his chiropractic office after hours. Without Dr. Wong's commitment to Neighborhood Watch, we could not have accomplished all that we have done. Today, we're here to honor and thank Dr. Wong for helping the City of San Carlos remain one of the safest cities in our county. Ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Harry Wong. And I'd like to invite Sheriff Carlos Bolanas to recognize Dr. Wong and administer the award. Sheriff?
Thank you Chief Dury. Dr. Wong, it is my distinct pleasure and honor to present you with the Sheriff's Crime Prevention Award for your work towards keeping San Carlos the outstanding and safe community that it is. It is people such as yourself that are true partners to law enforcement and ensure that San Carlos maintains its outstanding quality of life. So on behalf of myself, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, just a few. I really want to thank, it's been such a community effort between the City of San Carlos, our Sheriff's Department, and our neighbors to work together to make not only a safer San Carlos, but in the areas where we created Neighborhood Watch Groups, something magical happened that got me so excited. And that is that neighbors started talking to neighbors. And neighbors started knowing each other. In my neighborhood, it's like, if I'm washing my car, which you can now, neighbors walk by and I know who everybody is. They'll say, hey, hi Doc Wong, or hi Harry, and I say hi Mary. And you know, it's just a wave of friendliness came over the neighborhood which I had not experienced before. We have great neighbors, but we kind of, you know, we kind of mind our own business, right? And we don't say much to each other typically, but now it's completely different. And I better shut up because I think I spoke longer than... But I want to thank you, the Sheriff's Department, you've been there all the time backing us up, and it's really appreciated by myself and all the neighbors. So thank you so much.
Thanks, Sheriff Carlos, appreciate it. Dr. Wong, let me offer my congratulations too. Thank you so much. A perfect example of why San Carlos is a great city, Dr. Wong and all the work that he's done. And of course, there's hundreds, if not more than that, out in this community that have done so much. But again, congratulations to him for getting the award. The next item we have is a recognition of an Eagle Scout Award honoring John Wilson. John, you want to come forward? So we've got a proclamation here for you. Boy Scouts obviously play a vital force in the lives of hundreds of boys and young men in the City of San Carlos who are guided by adult volunteers who have also given generously of their time and talents. Whereas for a service project, the final requirement for the rank of Eagle Scout, John Wilson developed a program to properly retire American flags flown in the community. His project involved fundraising, constructing a drop box for worn and tattered American flags, developing a script for the flag retirement ceremony, and advertising the program. Whereas John Wilson's project will be of great benefit to the San Carlos community, and whereas the special and unique honor of achieving the highest award bestowed by the Boy Scouts was earned by John Wilson of Troop 321. Therefore, be it resolved that I Bob Grisilli, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, hereby congratulate John Wilson on the entainment of the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout and commend him for his service and accomplishments as a member of the Boy Scouts of America dated this 25th day of June 2018. John, congratulations. Where do you go to school?
I just graduated from St. Francis and I'll be attending Tulane University in New Orleans next year.
Great, what are you going to be taking?
I will be studying political economy.
Political economy, great. Well, thank you so much for all the work that you did and for that project, appreciate it, thank you. Okay. All right, we'll move on to public comment. Public comment, this is for folks that want to address the council for items not on the public agenda, and I have some speaker cards. And I'll just start, and we're trying to limit this probably to about two minutes or so. First one is Edward Schlesinger, if I said that right. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, the council, my name is Edward Schlesinger and I've lived in San Carlos since 2013, and I love living in San Carlos, it's a wonderful city. There's just one thing that San Carlos doesn't have that other cities do have, and that's protection against secondhand smoke in multi-unit housing. And I've come today to express my appreciation for Mr. Olbert getting the ball rolling at the previous meeting, and to the City Council for putting it on their study session because it is impacting our lives, and we want to make our neighborhood and our community as healthy and safe and happy as possible. I'm working with a small group of my neighbors also on this issue, so we ask, please let us know how we can help you move this issue forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir. Marina, gentleman? Sorry if I butchered that.
Hello. I promise I didn't coordinate this with Edward, but it's actually on the same note as keeping the San Carlos the outstanding, you know, having that outstanding quality of life and protecting the city peace, health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. I have been a longtime resident of San Carlos, I work and live here, I absolutely love this city. And, but over the years, I have noticed a huge, or change, or actually not change, which needs to be changed, is basically, well, I'll just give you the visual and the sound example is... This is my morning, every morning. And it's not, it's not just me, I think the community itself, we have a lot of gardening, we have a lot of greenery, which this is one of the advantages of our city. But we need to take precautions and we need to keep up at times and we need to make necessary changes for, again, for welfare, for peace, and health of our residents. So I'm proposing to make a noise policy similar as Palata has, and I have a copy. So basically also create a leaf blower ordinance and ban all gas, you know, tools that gardeners can use, that also, you know, lawn mowers, but specifically also a leaf blowers. Because of, the old lady live in a high air, you know, traffic zone and just, you know, also car traffic. But this is something that they can change, and I think it's not going to take a lot of resources on the, you know, trade people's side as well, it's just a one-time change and it's going to be, you know, Palata did this in 2005, and I think we should follow along.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Natasha Melly?
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Natasha Melly, I'm a resident of Greenwood Avenue, and I'm here tonight to present my Neighborhood Traffic Management Program petition. My neighbors and my family frequently use the crosswalk at Britton Avenue and Woodland Avenue, to and from Burton Park, the Youth Center, Laurel Street, the library, Arroyo Elementary, Central Middle Schools. The crosswalk is unsafe. Drivers either don't see the crosswalk, don't know to stop at the crosswalk, or don't care to stop for pedestrians in the crosswalk. I've spoken with the Engineering Department, and they said they plan to get around to restriping the crosswalk at some point. I don't think that restriping the crosswalk will make it safe enough. I'm here to respectfully ask that the council urge the Engineering Department to install a pedestrian-triggered flashing signal similar to the one at Britton, Tamrac, and Greenwood. I can count at least 40 kids under the age of 12 in my immediate few blocks that we use this crosswalk. My kids will soon be old enough to walk to Burton Park and school alone, and I want to make sure that the crosswalk is as safe as it can be for them. I've gathered these signatures from neighbors who would also like to see the city take action in installing a flashing crosswalk signal. Thank you for your consideration to this important neighborhood issue. to this important neighborhood issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Can I just ask, Steph, what is the next step when, after the petition is submitted?
After the petition's submitted, it goes into line. There usually are a number of applications that the Public Works Department is working on. And when that one comes up, they begin to study, look into the specific issues. And then if, in many instances, some of these things don't require future council action, and in instances, they might, in which case, it would then be agendized and brought back to the council for future action.
Could we have just a report or whatever on how far in the queue it would be?
I'll get that information and be sure to pass it on to you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. The next speaker I have is Ken Castle. Welcome, Ken.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Looks like safety and traffic is a topic tonight. And so I also have a similar topic. Last week, I came to attend the meeting of the Transportation and Circulation Commission. I expected it to be here. I went to the front door, and guess what? It was locked. No sign on the door. I then did a quick search online and discovered that, oopsie, the meeting is being held in the library. So I went to the library, where I found the meeting room upstairs largely empty, the arrangement not really conducive to public engagement, and a less than a quorum of the commission meeting, which I've been seeing all year, and concern about the commission's position and its importance to the city. And the understanding from the commission members who were present, which there were two, was that they might even be moved upstairs into one of the meeting rooms, and no explanation on why that would be happening. Now, frankly, marginalizing this commission, which has good members, they are intelligent, they are thoughtful, they are respectful of people that come and talk to them, marginalizing them to a situation where people are not going to be inclined to come to a meeting, or are not going to find a meeting, is not giving them due respect. And I think they should be back here in the council chambers. And I think there should be a more robust agenda, because plenty of people in this city have concerns about traffic issues and pedestrian issues. And one of the big ones is looming large on El Camino, where the new parking lot next to the railroad station across from Trader Joe's is going to stimulate quite a bit of pedestrian traffic going across a crosswalk that has only blinking yellow lights when they work, which they haven't been doing lately. And my feeling is that's an accident waiting to happen, because I witnessed a close call of a woman crossing that pedestrian lane on a bicycle, going from the west to the east side. One car in the right lane had stopped. Another car in the middle line did not see that there was a pedestrian in the lane. And this woman edged across and was just narrowly missed by this other car that was going probably 40 miles an hour. Could have been a serious injury. If it had been a bus, or truck, or some other thing that would block the view of other drivers, that there's a pedestrian in that lane, that would be highly dangerous. You should know that Caltrans, and you probably do know, is experimenting with hybrid lights. They have a new one on Woodside Road that is a blinking red light, which can be blinking red when there's nobody in the crosswalk, and sending mixed signals to drivers. This has already caused concern down in San Jose area, because drivers are confused. There's also been some issues in the town of Atherton with pedestrian deaths that have occurred on El Camino, because of people crossing in unprotected crosswalks. Given the fact that we're going to have a lot of cars parked in that lot potentially, that people will be crossing during rush hours in darkness and in rain and fog and so forth, it's set up for a very, very serious accident. And the fact that you're going to have more people crossing over from the Tressel Apartments once those are occupied, really underscores the fact that this city needs to look seriously at pedestrian interaction with El Camino along its borders. And we need to have a strong Transportation and Circulation Commission that's supported by the Public Works Director, regardless of whether there's controversy or not. It's an important group, and I would urge you to reconsider this marginalization of that commission. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Sandy Althouse?
Hi, everyone. I'm Sandy Althouse. I'm a longtime resident of the city. So tomorrow, the cutting commences on the row of eucalyptus trees lining San Carlos Avenue. Many of those trees were planted more than 120 years ago by one of our city's founders, Guy Phelps. Currently, our historic train station is being consumed by massive buildings. And very soon, you'll only be able to see it as a direct shot down San Carlos Avenue. And then adding insult to injury, it is rumored that the train platform might be moved south a number of blocks, further diminishing the importance of our most notable historic building. San Carlos has not updated its list of historical resources in over 25 years, and that's a long time. In that time, the city has boomed. We've lost a significant number of charming old buildings, and potentially ones that have historic significance, including two that were recently razed on San Carlos Avenue. There are two beautiful Art Deco buildings in town that have piqued people's interest lately. They're worried that the J&amp;M Hobby House on Laurel Street and the Lighthouse in El Camino might be lost to developers as well. These are gorgeous buildings that have been around a lot longer than anyone in this room. And because it's me, I'm going to mention, nothing's been done to ensure the Carlos Club neon sign is restored to its original state. And now the owner of the bar who leases the building, that is on the list of historical resources, is facing a legal battle after not paying his employees. Chances are, John Lee is not going to want to pay to restore the neon to that sign, although the city council required him to do so over two years ago. So please, while focusing so intently on our city's future, remember its past and help guard it. There's not much left to protect, but I hope the council will promote another counting of historical resources and help model the importance of saving some city history. The San Carlos Heritage Association, which would welcome some new blood if anybody's interested, wants to open the dialogue to get a count done in the near future, and we look forward to your support.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on items not on the posted agenda this evening? All right, move on then. Next item on our agenda is consent calendar. Consent calendar items are usually done in one motion. So, gentlemen, anyone want to remove anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve City Council and Housing Authority Consent Calendar Items A through N, and Item O, adopting ordinance number 1531, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending ordinance 1507 with the Plan Development PD zoning District, and approving amendments to the associated plan of development to accommodate life science tenants at 887 Industrial Road and adjacent addresses, including 821 to 871 Industrial Road and 831 Branston Road.
A second. All right, moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Grisilli?
Yes. All right, thank you. Moving on to Item Eight, Reports to Council. Reports to Council are updates on key city projects by city department heads and staff and city's council subcommittees. They are informational in nature, and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. So we have a Report to the Council on the Community Nonprofit Grant Program.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Kristin Flores, Senior Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office. I'm here this evening to present council with an annual report on the city's nonprofit grant program. So this annual report is for fiscal year 2017-18, that we're just wrapping up here in the next week, and then into the next year, 2018 and 19. In 2016, the City Council established a program for awarding nonprofits our grants. And what the process is, is each year, as part of the biannual budget process, the council determines if they would like to allocate funding for this program. And then if funding is allocated, the city will issue a call for applications, advertise the call for applications, and collect responses. There is a council subcommittee that will review the applications and make recommendations. And then the city manager makes the actual grant awards based on the subcommittee's recommendations. So that's sort of an overview of the process of how we award the grants. In 2017-18, so this last year that we're just sort of wrapping up, there were four organizations that were awarded grants: Healthy Cities Tutoring, the San Carlos Children's Theater, the Museum of San Carlos History, and One Life Counseling. Each year, sort of in the mid-year, we ask that the organizations that receive grant funding submit a mid-year report to the city, so that we can check in on how their programs and projects are going along, and how they're spending their grant funding. This year, they completed their mid-year reports, and they're included with your staff reports to read. One that was notable was the Museum of San Carlos History. They digitized 120 microfiche films of old newspaper articles, effectively making them researchable online by different groups and organizations and people. So that is complete. So we were happy to hear that that project is done. Then, an overview of the grant program for fiscal year 1819, that we are just wrapping up. The council budgeted $40,000 in the 1819 fiscal year. The city issued the call for applications in October of 2017. Applications were due this spring, in May of 2018. And you'll see that we had quite a large window where we had that call for applications out. And the intent was that we wanted to really work with the nonprofit groups to promote people to apply, and sort of broaden the pool of people that were requesting grant funding. And we were successful in that quest. This was the most competitive grant cycle that we have had yet. We received 10 applications, a total of $110,300 requested in funding. The subcommittee reviewed the applications and recommended award amounts to the city manager. And those have been reviewed and approved by our city manager. So an overview of the funding that was given this year, there were nine organizations out of the 10 that applied that received funding. Many of the programs and projects that were submitted for grant funding are sort of ongoing and operating in nature. And so the approach that was taken in divvying up the $40,000 was sort of doing partial funding for organizations, because they would benefit from a piece of funding, whereas it wasn't so much projects that were, you know, if there was no funding received, or all funding received, that the project would happen or not happen. So a lot of the grant recipients received partial funds. And you'll see that here in this table. So the Carrying Cupboard, County of San Mateo Jobs for Youth, Healthy Cities Tutoring, the Museum of San Carlos History, One Life Counseling, Parca Peninsula Volunteers, the San Carlos Children's Theater, and Star Vista. And you'll notice that number nine, the San Carlos Youth Center Foundation, was not awarded any funding as part of this program. The application that they submitted was to create a maker space at the youth center. And so it was determined that this program wasn't the appropriate funding venue for that project. And so we've recommended that they work with the city and try to sort of get that maker space created through a different route. The next steps with this program, council has also budgeted $40,000 for fiscal year 1920. So we'll basically be following the same process that we have in years past. We anticipate issuing the call for applications in early 2019, and having the application, same thing, due around May 2019, to give organizations plenty of time to apply. We'll make sure to put it out in our council newsletter, online, through all of our outreach venues, so we can hopefully continue to have a competitive process. And then we'll continue to work with the subcommittee to refine the program as needed. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Kristin. Questions? Mr. Grocott?
Yeah, I'm just, a couple of things, just curious about. I don't understand why this is informational only in nature. Seems...
Because the process we set up was that the subcommittee would review it, and then it would go to the city manager.
Okay. Well, it gives the rest of us very much power or authority in...
That's the way we set it up, so. It can be changed, but that's the way it's set up now.
Are we, can we make some comments on...
You can say whatever you want.
Well, it's question period. So when do you want to comment?
Comment right now.
All right.
Because there's not, there's no action taken, so, yeah.
Well, there isn't going to be any action taken, right?
Right. So your comments or questions, please go ahead.
Just throw it out there, is I just find it interesting that the overall amount, when we're looking at increases in income to the city revenues through taxes and other things, fees and so forth, that this total amount for this, or the budget amount for this would go down so significantly. And then, since we're, you know, not granting 20,000 to what the youth center is asking for, it sort of adds to, at least my thinking, that, well, that would mean money that could go someplace else. And yet, it's not happening. So I'm dismayed to see that. And I also think that, you know, given that, can you put up the total amount?
40,000 was given, 110 was asked.
Okay, so 40,000. And, you know, we just recently gave 50,000 to a countywide gun buyback program with the Sheriff's Department. So why this couldn't, you know, at least match something like that, I don't know. And then lastly, the, when I look up and down the line, and I see the disparity between, you know, one program to another, it's quite a bit of difference, you know, from 6,000, say, at the top, to 2,000 at the bottom. To me, I'd like to see something that's more equitable across the line, so it doesn't look like we're judging one program over another. You know, they're probably all worthwhile, and so they should, the numbers, to me, should be more equitable. So that's, it's just my...
Okay. Having served on this committee with Mr. Olbert, and also having done it actually on a private foundation that I've been on for 25 years, this is not an easy thing to do. And if there's only a certain amount of money, you have to divide it up. And it's, believe me, it's very, it's arbitrary. There's no question about it. We didn't take it lightly, and we did study it. Mr. Olbert, comments?
I would concur with that. Actually, all I was going to say is, and I'm not sure I completely understood you, Matt, but my recollection is that this budget line item had been at the $20,000 level for many, many, many years. And it was a few years ago that it got increased to 40,000. And I remember that only because it came about during a budget study session that I happened to miss, and so I ended up being the tiebreaker vote on moving it up to 40,000. It's certainly something that could be changed. In all honesty, I don't recall any comments being made about increasing it during this last budget cycle, which is typically when we would, we would do that. I can't speak, obviously, for anybody else. For me, I know what was in the back of my mind about not suggesting a change to it was, we do have this thing coming down the road. The council had given staff direction to take $2 million, is it?
Community foundation, right.
$2 million of the, I think Cameron suggested originally, the $2 million of the PG&E settlement, and devoted, dedicated to a community foundation, which would be another channel for making philanthropic investments in the community. And so, just speaking for me, I was kind of like, well, yes, there's reasons why we could increase to 40,000, but we're sort of going to be doing that soon anyway. But those are just the comments I wanted to make.
If I may, a question?
Sure.
With the youth center, there is a project going on. Is, could that somehow be adjusted or enveloped into that project?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Let me jump in on this. That's exactly the issue, and sort of where we were coming from. It didn't feel right to us to give the Youth Center Foundation a grant, when we would then be the recipients of that grant, when we already had more applications than we had money to award. So we figured there were lots of other opportunities to work with the foundation and the youth center, since it's ours, to make that happen.
Makes sense. Thanks.
Mr. Collins, a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add some historical perspective. I think I might have been the person that recommended that we increase it from 20 to 40,000. And just as a, one point of reference, we only had, I believe, two organizations before that were asking us for money. There was Healthy Cities Tutoring and, what, Carrying Cupboard? And last year, there were four, and now there are 10. So, you know, and I'm happy to ask that that amount be increased again. But given some of the other things that are happening, it may or may not be appropriate. But I can guarantee you that if we up that to 50 or 75, we'll probably have a lot more applicants. So, anyway, that's just some historical perspective.
Okay. Kristin, thank you very much for all the work you did on this. And Tara, too, I know worked on this also. Thank you. All right, moving on.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for all the work you did on it.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Olbert, for all the work you did on it. Is there anything else that did any work on it? So, as the city manager suggested, let's, we're moving 10A to this area. 10A is a consideration of appointing seven youth advisory council, YAC, voting members for the 2018-2020 term and recognizing three retiring youth advisory council voting members. Ms. Newby?
Good evening, Mayor Grisilli, council members, and members of the community join us here still tonight. Amy Newby Parks Recreation Director. I'd like to introduce Tyler Moella, our recreation supervisor, and Caitlin Matoso, our recreation coordinator, who will come up, introduce all of our outgoing and incoming youth advisory council members tonight.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Amy.
Boy, you guys got fans. We never get, nobody ever claps for us.
Good evening. How are you guys doing? First off, I just actually wanted to thank council member Ron Collins, who helped Caitlin and our current, some of our current YAC members do the interviews for these new incoming youth advisory council members. So, thank you to you for taking your time to help us. It was great. First, I'd actually like to acknowledge, we have a couple of current members on hand who came to support our incoming and outgoing members. So, for those of you that came, give a wave. Is it one of you?
Laura.
Me supporting?
There you go. Thank you for coming. I'd also like to acknowledge two of our new members-at-large. Mackenzie Rawls, if you could stand up. Mackenzie's a junior at Carlmont High School, and she's a new member-at-large. We also have Maya Nabor. Stand up. Hi, Maya. She's an eighth grader at Tierra Linda, and she's also a new member-at-large. Okay, at this point, I'm going to call the new incoming members. If you could just come and stand right here when I call your name. Luke Tremblay, he is a junior at Sarah High School. Come on up. Maya Lipp, who is a sophomore at Carlmont High School. Isabella Sugden, she's a freshman at Sequoia High School. Ali Ayers, who is a junior at Carlmont High School, who's an alternate. And then, Maya DeValteruvu, who's a sophomore at Sequoia High School. That was a tough one. Okay, at this point, the action would be to, for council to...
Shouldn't approve them? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I move to appoint Luke Tremblay, Veronica Roseborough, Maya Lipp, Isabella Sugden, Luke Eden, Ali Ayers, and Maya, I should have paid more attention. I apologize.
I didn't do a good job.
Well, I'm going to do a bad job, too. DeValteruvu? Oh, wow, okay. To the youth advisory council as voting members for the 2018-2020 term.
Second.
All right, moved in second to appoint these young people to that committee, or that group, youth advisory council. Any further discussion on this? If not...
I just wanted to say that I think it's great that you folks have volunteered and gone through the process to get to this point, and thank you very much for helping to make San Carlos a better place.
Absolutely. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor?
No, I'm sorry.
I also had a comment.
Sure.
I want to thank the youth center for inviting me to come to the interviews. I didn't really know why I was being invited. I thought, well, what can I contribute to this? I don't think I did contribute anything. They contributed to me. I have a very much newfound appreciation for the youth of this country. There is hope and optimism out there, and it resides in these five individuals standing here and all the, all the young members of our community sitting over there. I was extremely impressed. What an incredible organization and a group of young, fine young San Carlos residents. And I'm just very proud to have been part of that, and thank you for inviting me.
All right. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
Congratulations.
And just real quickly, I just wanted to acknowledge three of our outgoing YAC members. Tyrese Lopez, if you could stand up. She served with, on the youth advisory council for one year, and she enjoyed getting to work with a variety of people and getting involved with the city. And then, her favorite accomplishment that she was a part of was the senior prom event that we just had in the, in the spring. Yeah. So, thank you, Tyrese. Appreciate it. Kyler Jerome, if you could stand, please. Kyler served on the youth advisory council for seven years. His favorite part was being a part of city government and being civically involved even before he's able to vote. And his biggest accomplishment was partnering with the city to do a blood drive annually and also ensuring it continues past his tenure. So, Kyler, thank you very much. Great job. And then, Tiffany Chung, if you could stand, Tiffany, who was our, what was it, president?
Chairperson.
Chairperson for, how many years did you, for three years? So, she led the charge of this awesome group. She was on the council for six years, and her favorite part was working with the youth in San Carlos and creating fun events alongside people from different schools. And her biggest accomplishment was the senior prom event. It was amazing, in her words, "It was amazing planning the date decorations theme and so much more, seeing the guests leave at the end of the night with smiles on their faces, felt so fulfilling." And she can't wait to hear about the future ones that we do. So, thank you, Tiffany. Awesome job.
I think the city clerk needs some signatures. I have a question, though. How come I wasn't invited to the senior prom? I'm a senior.
Next year.
Next year? Okay, great. Thank you. I could show you some dancing.
Mr. Mayor, I just want, I just wanted to add one thing. I think Tiffany has a future, at least in human resources. She was really a tough interviewer, and she really did well.
If I can have you raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will will and faithfully discharge the duties for which you're about to enter?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I just want to add my comments, too, is the incoming members and the three outgoing members and the other two folks that were introduced, thank you all for your service. It's what makes the town go. So, all volunteers, all good. So, we're going to be getting into the next item. If folks need to leave or go do homework or, oh, no, school's out?
School's out.
Give you a chance to get outside. Okay, so now, we'll go back to the agenda where we'll go to 9A. Unfinished business. Consideration of introducing an ordinance amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 8.09, Regulation of Commercial Cannabis Activities and imposing an excise tax of up to 10% on cannabis businesses for unrestricted general revenue purposes, subject to the approval of the voters. And adopted, adopting, rather, related resolutions. Number one, setting the measure on the November 6, 2018 ballot, and directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis. Number two, setting priorities for the filing of written arguments. Number three, providing for the filing of rebuttal arguments. You're up.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. At the last council meeting, we proposed four actions for council to consider to place the commercial cannabis business tax on the November ballot. Those are the four actions you just named off. There was concern expressed by the council regarding the draft ballot language that would appear in the actual, in the candidate information, in the ballot information. As such, the council directed staff to address the following two items. The first was to determine if the estimated revenue amount does need to be included as part of the question on the ballot. And the second was to state clearly that there are no cannabis businesses in town currently. So, to address these concerns, staff confirmed with our special counsel that we do need to include a revenue estimate in the ballot question. So, we've left that in. But we've also wordsmithed the language a little bit on the ballot measure to talk about the fact that there are no cannabis businesses in town. So, up on the screen now is the revised ballot language for your review. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Bob. Just one quick question, which somebody brought to my attention. I have to admit, I walked past the store hundreds of times and hadn't thought about it. Bow Wow Meow actually sells cannabinoid treats for pets. And it suddenly occurred to me, does, does that, I don't remember how he drafted the ordinance, is that actually allowed under the ordinance? And if so, I guess that's a Greg Rubens question. I should have prefaced it with that.
Well, we have to look into it to see if that qualifies for the language, but off the top of my head, it seems like it should, because it sounds like it's, but it may be that we drafted for human consumption, because it is based on the recreational marijuana. So, the, and they may not have the level of active ingredient, et cetera. So, we have to look at it, and if it is, we will, we will make sure the law applies.
Oh, I hadn't thought about that. I was thinking about it in terms of the ordinance, but never mind. That's, I just wanted to bring it up. It's probably not a big deal either way.
It does explain the chocolate lab I saw barreling across the park today that went headfirst into one of the lampposts in the park.
Can I follow up on that question? Not on the chocolate lab, but on the previous question.
Mr. Johnson?
So, just to clarify, then, a business that sells some cannabis products that sells other non-cannabis products would be taxed only on the sales of the cannabis products? Is that right? Or the, or, because the, it reads, any cannabis business owes up to 10% of gross receipts of each business, but it doesn't, doesn't specify. I just wanted to know what the intent is.
The intent would be on the cannabis product, not on other related, you know, like, I guess, a cigarette lighter, for example, which could be used for many things.
Okay.
Would not be taxed.
Other questions? Okay. This is not a, per se, a public hearing, but is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I guess I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to introduce ordinance number...
1533.
1533, an ordinance of the city council of the city of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 8.09, Regulation of Commercial Cannabis Activities and imposing an excise tax of up to 10% of gross receipts on cannabis business for unrestricted general purposes, subject to the approval of the voters.
Mr. Rubens, each one of these individually voted on?
Yes, four separate actions.
Okay. Is there a second to that? I have a second. I'm moved in second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert? Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
All right, just keep moving.
Keep moving.
All right, I move to adopt Resolution 2018 dash...
70.
70, a resolution of the city of San Carlos, setting a measure on the November 6, 2018 general municipal election ballot, seeking voter approval of a proposed ordinance amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 8.09, Regulation of Commercial Cannabis Activities, establishing an excise tax of up to 10% on cannabis businesses and unrestricted general revenue purposes, and authorizing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis.
I have a second. All right, moved in second. Any questions? Discussion, none? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
All right. I move to adopt Resolution 2018 dash...
71.
71, a resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos, setting priorities for the filing of written arguments relating to a measure to be submitted to the voters of the city at the consolidated municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 6, 2018, proposing an excise tax of up to 10% of gross receipts on cannabis businesses and appoint council members. Did we agree who those council members are?
We've not discussed that yet tonight, but last week, or last meeting, excuse me, you did discuss for the other ballot measure for TOT.
We need to name them now?
You should name them, yes.
I can, I did, I think I'm on the other one also, right? I'll do it for this one, too.
I'm happy to do it unless anyone else is desperate. Okay.
There's no limit, so.
Can I say all interested council members? Or, name them, all right.
Just raise your hand if you want to be named, we will name you.
There's, there's just a little, just to clarify, if we have more than two, then to discuss what's included, we might need to have a special meeting.
Why don't we just make it myself and Ron, unless Mark or someone else wants to jump on there?
And appoint council members Grisilli and Collins to file a written argument for the measure.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Moved in second. Discussion, questions? Hearing none. Roll call?
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
And finally, I move to adopt Resolution 2018 dash...
72.
72, a resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos, providing for the filing of rebuttal arguments relating to a measure to be submitted to the voters of the city at the consolidated municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 6, 2018, proposing an excise tax of up to 10% of gross receipts on cannabis businesses.
I have a second. Moved in second. Any questions? Comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Grisilli?
Yes. The one thing I would like to ask council, though, is, or, Mr. Rubens, our council, is what are the dates that the arguments have to be in by?
They are due to the county on the 17th for the primary...
Again, speak a little slower, please, I'm sorry.
The 17th, August 17th, for the primary arguments.
They're due that day at five, by 5:00?
Correct.
Okay, and both? Both pro and con?
Correct.
Okay, so the rebut, the proposal and also the rebuttal, just want to make sure the public knows...
The rebuttals are due August 27th.
That's okay. That's what I was asking. All right, so the proponents, August 17th, rebuttals have an extra 10 days. And where are they submitted to? You or to the, or to the county?
It would be to me.
To you, the city clerk, okay. I want to make sure people know where that has to go. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Mendenhall. But she's going to keep standing there, because the next item is 10B. Consideration of adopting resolution, adopting a memorandum of understanding between the city of San Carlos and the local A29 American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, asks me for the period of July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2020.
Yes, good evening again. So, the AFSMI, or the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, or otherwise known as AFSMI, their existing memorandum of understanding, or MOU, will expire at the end of this month. We've met and conferred with the union and have come to some terms that are included in your packet. This group is comprised of 30 positions, including account technicians, senior admin clerks, associate planners, building inspectors, civil engineering technician in assistance, assistant public works superintendent, a facility attendant, a fire prevention officer, recreation coordinators and supervisors, and systems and senior systems analysts. The key components of the new agreement for your consideration are noted here. It's a two-year term, from July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2020. There's a fiscal impact of $112,800 in the first year and $121,500 in the second year. As noted during the budget discussions, certain assumptions were included in the development of the budget, so there is no additional funding required at this time. There are salary adjustments of a 3% of increase in base wage rates effective July 9, 2018, and a 3% increase effective July 8, 2019. There's union access to new employee orientation pursuant to Government Code, Section 3555. This is spelled out, where the union can have a representative involved in the new employee orientation process. Within 60 days following council adoption, the union will take a vote to determine if they choose to enroll in the California State Disability Insurance, otherwise known as SDI. Just as a clarification point, there was a small typo in the staff report. It said 30 days, but it's actually they have 60 days to vote. Should the union decide to opt into this program, the cost would be borne entirely by the employee at a little over $1,000 per year. And finally, the union voted to eliminate contributions towards their VIVA, or the Voluntary Employee Benefit Association. The VIVA is a program to allow payments for qualified post-employment expenses to occur on a pre-tax basis. This program had been funded entirely through employee contributions of up to $400 of accumulated vacation accrual every year, which the employees voted to terminate going forward. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? All right, roll call, please. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution 2018 dash-
Motion.
73. Thank you. Adopting a memorandum of understanding between the city of San Carlos and the local 829 American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSCME, for the period of July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2020.
I second. Moved in second, which would probably be a good idea before we have a vote. Okay, any other comments or discussion on this item? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.